So it looks like there is a quorum for both right now already. So what I'll do then is I will open the floor to anyone who wants to participate in public comment to raise their hand. I'll have a list ready here. That means that we don't want you to literally hold your hand up to the screen. There are two ways to go about raising your hand. One is to use the reactions icon, which is at the bottom of your screen. So if you click on the reactions icon, there will be a feature to raise hand. Also, if you open up the participants panel by clicking on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen, there will be an option in the bottom right to raise hand. So if you want to participate in public comment, the joint budget hearings are going to have a hard close at 7:00 PM for that, for entry into public comment. And they're going to function basically like they would with a normal town council meeting. You'll have five minutes. The acting sergeant at arms will keep that time. And if, and I'm only going to meet you if, you know, basically you're done, or if I get a request to meet you from either the sergeant at arms or Pete, our mayor, since he is the efficient of the meeting tonight. But otherwise, it would be just like a normal town council meeting. So get those hands raised if you want to get on the list for public comment. Pete, you may have to give a brief, uh, brief disclaimer here for how things are going to work for everybody since we're in Zoom and not in person.
Absolutely. I'll wait till.
Olga's coming in. Just give me, you might want to just give her a second. So the way this is going to work if in case of, and when I bring somebody in for presentation is I'll have to give them a co-host in case they want to share their screen. Stephanie, where is Stephanie? Um, I think Stephanie's, we're probably going to have to have Stephanie remain unmuted because she's probably going to have to jump in on a moment's notice for certain things.
I'm here.
Good evening, Stephanie.
Oh, Mr. Bear.
I is here too.
How's your arm feeling from your, your shot yesterday?
I tell you, no symptoms whatsoever, no dizziness, no soreness, no, you know, feeling weak. In fact, it's, it's the best I've felt in a long time with the second shot. So I'm good to go. Oh, yeah. I'm thrilled.
Get more shots, Walter.
Pardon?
Get more shots.
Yeah. Yes, whiskey for the men. Yes.
Chairman.
What's Walter?
I would imagine. Uh, he's still, he's still coming in. All right, I'm just going to rename him so I can keep track. Where, where is Walter now? Walter, I'm going to rename you, Walter O'Connor. So if you could please refrain from renaming yourself, I appreciate just keeping track of things. Where is Walter?
Why come Doug Skelly so tan?
Oh gee, I don't know. Must be those high watt lights you work under, Doug.
Walter, I'm unmuting you because I know that you're, you have a vacant seat and you have alternates here.
Yes, I know. I was just about to tell Stephanie Lee, Stephanie, we will see Ray Jankowski for the open seat.
Who's the open seat?
Uh, it's, it's unfilled.
Oh.
It has been, it's either, see the Steve Confortinis or Beth, Beth Falders, one of those two. I'm not sure what we actually did.
All right. So I'm going to unmute Ray just momentarily here because I don't see an icon for his video.
So I've got for the council, I have Katie, Chris Cosgrove, Mary Jane, Doug Skelly, Dave Lawson, and Mike Nahom.
Tom Esposito is here now.
I don't see.
He's coming in now.
Okay. Am I missing anybody else for the council?
I don't think so.
And then for border finance.
Is Michael Gold with us?
No.
Well, there you go.
For the, for the border finance, I have Trevor, Diane Cliffe, Larry, Walter, Barbara, Joe, Ray. And then so Ray is filling in, uh, an open seat. Is Joe filling a seat?
No, he's, he's an alternate. With Ray there, if Amy and, uh, Barbara are here, then there's no, no seat for him. If either one of them aren't here, then you can see Joe.
Barbara is on, I can see her name anyway.
Barbara's here, Amy is not.
Okay.
So Joe is here, you could see him for Amy unless Amy shows up, then you gotta reverse it.
Okay.
So Walter, would you like me to seat Joe or not?
Uh, what time is it?
Two minutes till.
Why don't you wait till exactly seven and then do that?
Okay, if Amy is not here, then I'll, then I will see, I will see Joe.
Okay.
So we're closing in on last call for public comment. So if you want to participate in public comment, you please use the hand, raise hand feature. Again, there are two ways to do that at the bottom of your screen. If you click on the reactions button, there is an option to raise your hand. If you open up the participants panel, which is also on the bottom of your screen, if you push the, click on the participants button, it will open up the participants panel in the bottom right, there will be a button to raise your hand now with a gray background. So if you guys want to participate, if anyone wants to participate in public comment, it will function just like it would normally at a town council meeting, five minutes to address the board of finance and/or the town council. Get those hands raised, a hard close in about 30 seconds. Okay, Tim Fotopoulos, this looks like Amy. Tim Fotopoulos, is that actually Amy?
Could very well be, uh.
I, I'm asking, I just sent an invitation to unmute so we can confirm this. Uh, is that Amy?
Yes, it is.
All right, Amy, I'm just going to rename you so I can keep track of things easier. Please don't.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep. All right. And I'm going to send you an invitation to start your video. Uh, and then we're going to try to make use of the raise hand feature here. So basically everyone's going to be muted. Um, where is?
So Walter, Amy being here, Joe is still an alternate.
Joe, Joe is, is no longer seated. He can partake in any discussions or questions we have. He just can't, uh, vote on any motions.
Okay, but Ray is seated for the open seat.
Correct.
Okay, so I, so I would be, uh, allowing Joe to participate in that respect.
Yes.
Okay, start video, Joe. All right, and I don't see anyone else. Um, let's see, uh, Pete, how do you feel about me making Walter and Katie co, oh, Katie's already co-host? Walter a co-host in case he needs to do things with his board of finance. Okay, where is Walter? Uh, actually, uh, Katie, you're going to have to promote Walter to the co-host.
Walter O'Connor?
Yes.
Well, I'd be happy to do that. There you go, Walter.
Okay, thank you.
Don't abuse the privilege, okay?
Yeah, that allows you to mute and unmute people, so.
It's a big pay raise.
Uh, yes, it is. I wasn't going to tell him that right away, Stephanie. I was going to see.
All right, we are at seven o'clock. I don't have any hands raised for public comment. Pete, you said hard close at seven o'clock, so meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to call the meeting for our budget hearings to order for the town council. Walter, could you open for the board of finance?
They call the, uh, meeting to order for the board of finance?
Thank you, Walter. First on the agenda, we had the opportunity for public participation. Next is the discussion of the finance department budget, and we have our comptroller here tonight, Olga.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'm here filling in for.
Olga, do we still have you?
Yep.
Yes. Oh, you, you guys couldn't hear me? I apologize. Okay. Hi, everyone. So I'm filling in for Greg Acipel. Um, big shoes to fill, but I'm just, you know, trying to do my best here. Um, I'd like to share my screen to start my presentation.
Katie, she needs to be a co-host.
I'm going right for it.
Uh, to go over our department budget request. In the meantime, if you could, please tune to page 73 in your budget books, or if you have a PDF in front of you, that would be page 78 in the PDF document, or page 73 in the budget books. Can you guys see my screen?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so this is just the budget presentation for the department request from the, um, finance office. Just would like to start by giving a brief overview of our department, what we are responsible for and what we are tasked, tasked with. So finance office is ultimately responsible for the annual audit, for the compilation of financial statements, preparation of budgets, all long and short-term financing, day-to-day transactions, accounts payable, purchasing payroll. We're responsible for the compliance with state and GASB requirements. Um, we're monitoring all investments. We're also maintain records and prepare banker conciliations for over 30 funds as well as numerous investment accounts. Overall, we oversee over 100 millions in, in assets. Uh, we prepare annual town report. We compile five-year capital plan, monitor insurance and pension funds, and we provide support for union negotiations. Um, there are five positions in our department. The head of the department is a director of finance, uh, nexus controller. And our foundation is purchasing specialist, accounts payable specialist, and pedal administration. So the department's request for the upcoming fiscal year '22 totals to 423,506. Um, the breakdown between five accounts is personnel at 388,706. Overtime at 1,000, this is just to cover some seasonal or, um, overtime needs, um, because we have some strict deadlines, um, or, you know, reporting deadlines during audit as well. So they just to cover that aspect. Material supplies at 13,800, CCM membership and GFOA membership at 18,500 and 1500. So overall, the change in the budget, uh, is due to the combination of wage increases and the addition of a EBIT management system. All other line items are flat for the next fiscal year. So just to give a little more feedback about the EBIT management, management system, this is the online procurement system that has been implemented. Considering, you know, it's a, we're really excited about that project. And it, we actually just last week, we had our first purchasing meeting when we actually used that system. So this allows for, um, online posting of our bids and the vendor submit their bids online as well. So there are no more paper drop-offs at the office. There's no more mail, you know, mail opening. There's no more scanning for Valerie, all those, you know, really big documents with the proposals. It's all being done electronically. So, and so far, it seems a really great, it's very transparent, it's always available. Um, and it just provides really just much better support and management of the, um, EBITding. So, um, and that's our department request. There is a page listed for the capital. There is no capital request, uh, from the finance office. Um, and that's about it. I'm open for questions.
Okay. So if we could, uh, if you have any questions for Olga, if you could just raise your hand. David? You have to unmute yourself, Dave.
Thank you. Uh, on the personnel line with the salaries, what is the breakdown of the salaries?
Sure. Actually, if you flip the next page in your budget books, um, that would give you the breakdown.
Page 74.
Um, if you still see my screen, I put it up as well.
Yep.
Page 74.
Okay, and how was the, uh, how are the increases determined?
So we have, uh, four position, uh, three positions, I apologize, that are, um, union positions. So those are contractual obligations. That's the ASME union. So those negotiate, you know, for several years.
I understand that.
Yep. So those are the ones. And for the non-union, uh, positions, uh, there was also a 2% increase, just basically in line with the union contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, you had a question? You have to unmute yourself?
Don't mute it.
Larry, have to unmute? Doesn't look like you're muted, but we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Larry, it could be your earphones, the speaker and your earphones are not working. So maybe you could try without the, uh, your earphones when you want to speak. I know that's what I've had to do in the past.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
No, go on to somebody else.
We can hear you, Larry.
He can't hear us. Did he unplug his, uh, headphones?
Okay.
Maybe, didn't?
I unplugged the.
Oh, good. We can hear you.
We can hear you, Larry.
He can't hear us. Can you hear us, Larry? Nope. Okay.
Hey, just a question in the meantime, before Larry gets back on, are these, um, presentations somewhere that I can access them? After tonight's meeting?
Yep.
I'd like to make a suggestion for Larry is to, we have the chat room set up and he could, uh, we could answer him through that and he could just talk right ahead. I don't see it here, though. Maybe Pete or Katie has it.
Has what?
Uh, chat, is the chat?
Everybody should have the opportunity to do that. I believe.
I don't see it on my, my screen.
Chat, the, the enabling of the chat needs to happen before the meeting is actually set up.
Oh, we didn't, okay, we don't have it then, sorry. That's why.
Okay. Uh, Larry's left his, uh, desktop, so, um, any other questions for Olga? I don't see any. Do you see any, Mike?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Hold on one hand.
Yep.
Uh, David.
Yeah, I, uh, it was with the interest and I can't, I want to make sure I read it right. I can't remember which booklet and which page it was on, but it seemed, um, markedly lower than.
Yes, that would be in our revenue section. Yes, we, considering the market.
What page is that?
I think it's page four in the budget book. Um.
Page four, Dave, and it's under.
Budget book. Yes, it's one of the, um, you know, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
It's under stiff interest?
Yes.
Yep. Yes, it's one of the, uh, major impact, just considering the market right now, the interest rates are minimal. Even, you know, even this year.
Not quite what the Fed indicated yesterday and today.
Well, we're trying to project our best. Uh, I, I think it's, um, we're not in a position or we don't feel comfortable projecting such a rapid growth of interest to make up because even if you look at the actuals, um, this year, we're only at 16,000 for the first six months of this fiscal year. Uh.
Yeah, I understand for this year. I, I get that for so far, but, okay, should the interest increase, what do we do then?
It will, um, if, if we come above the budgeted number, it's just good news for the town. It will fall to the bottom line. And it will add, uh, to the, you know, uh, resulting position at the end of the fiscal year '22.
Right. Okay. Well, could we make a note of that and, uh, make sure that's included in the monthly updates?
Uh, oh, the changes in the interest rate, if we see any? Absolutely. Sure. I know Greg usually, he's always on top of it. You know, we, uh, mind our stiff interest, so absolutely.
I understand, I understand.
Sure, I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Larry, are you able to, uh, unmute?
We brought the expert in, but not so far.
Mike, can you unmute Larry?
I just sent him an unmute, but I don't think it's gonna work. Oh, there he goes. Larry, can you hear us?
Unmute.
There you go, Larry.
But he can't hear us.
Okay, Walter?
Okay, I just want to follow up on, uh, Dave Lawson's question with regard to interest rates and the decrease in revenue. Uh, last budget year.
There was something happened.
The cycle was.
Go back to where you just were with.
Uh, in the stiff fund, it was getting two and a half percent. The fund is like a money market. And those, uh, interest rates are now one, two basis points, so 200% lower in rate. Second thing, your comment on the Fed, the Fed is letting long interest rates go, but, uh, Chairman Powell today said they weren't going to do anything with short-term rates. So I fully expect for the next year that the, um, assumptions for interest income that we've made in this budget are going to be accurate.
Thank you, Walter. Do we have any?
Thank you.
Mike, I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone?
Uh, Walter did have his hand raised, but he, did you raise it again, Walter?
No, I just put it down.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all right, I think Larry's still trying to work on, uh, his sound. Next, we'll move on to the legal budget.
Olga, could you, uh?
I'll stop sharing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olga. So we'll turn to the budget book, page 99, and Randy could not make it, uh, tonight. He had, had an issue that came up. So if we could turn to our budget books, and you'll see the, uh, the breakout. And the, uh, only increases that you will see is, uh, uh, going to the 22, legal personnel's, uh, uh, other legal expenses, the same, uh, legal retainer is the one that increased, uh, from 21 to 22. And that's due to, uh, pending litigation, uh, that we talked about, uh, during our executive meeting, uh, uh, executive session at town council, I believe, meeting after, meeting prior to the last meeting. Well, legal land use is the same, uh, legal assessor is the same, legal tax collector is the same, and legal personnel, uh, is up. It looks like, uh, 10,000. Uh, there was a reduction in legal zoning, uh, and legal ZBA is that was folded into the land use, uh, which is why you see the adjustments there. Does anybody have any questions? Chris?
Yep, Pete, um, it does look like legal land use went up. What did you say that was from?
Legal land use, you could see where the legal zoning and ZBA have now been folded into, uh, land use. So that's why, okay, 20,000 reduction and a 5,000 reduction, just because combining that department into one entity.
Got you. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the legal? Mike, I don't see anybody else. Do you?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, next, we're going to move to, uh, mayor's office, which, uh, first begins on the revenue side, page two. And you can see we, uh, uh, added an additional revenue line of $9,000. And that's because the mayor's office will begin to do passports. Uh, so that's the revenue that we, uh, had looked at in previous history at the town clerk's office. So we went with the 9,000. So that's why you see a $9,000 number there. Uh, any questions on the revenue? Okay, next, we're going to go to the expenditures, which I believe is page 61, or 62, maybe?
61.
Yep, 61, thank you. Uh, you see the, uh, the personnel. Well, actually, 62 breaks it out a little better. So you see, uh, the mayor is unchanged. Uh, you see, uh, slight increases for personnel, uh, which, uh, is union and non-union, about 2% increase. Uh, you'll see longevity for the union and then in lieu of pension, uh, for the mayor's office. Uh, as for tourism, it stays the same. Materials and supply stays the same. Expenses count stays the same. Does anybody have any questions on the mayor's, uh, office? Amy?
Uh, yep, uh, just a quick question. I know this year, um, the vision was to use simple view. Um, and I'm curious to know, is the vision that the town will still use that before the end of this fiscal year? Or is that being used next year under tourism?
So the plan is to have that, uh, completed by the end of this fiscal year and then have it continue on for next fiscal year as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Do you see any other, Mike?
Uh, David is clapping his hands, so I'm assuming that's what.
Sorry, Dave. Dave?
Yeah, um.
I didn't see that.
I'm, can, help me out with this. Uh, this is cross-referencing hopefully with the audit report as well, uh, with the mayor's office. And we allotted, uh, for emergency use, $354,000 and change. Is that reflected in this year's budget as well, or what happened to that? Was it spent? Is it carried over? Was it transferred?
Olga, can you, Olga, can you talk to that? I, I don't think it's an operating budget line. I think it's a COVID line.
And that's, yeah, that's what I figured. That's what I figured.
I'm sorry, Dave, would you please repeat your question?
Um, with the mayor's office, with the audit report, we had, uh, you know, three, well, actually, this board authorized up to $354,000 and change, uh, for COVID, uh, expenses.
Yes.
That were unforeseen, yada, yada.
Yes.
Wanted to know how much of that was used and is, can we carry it over? Where is it? Is it in this next, well, this proposed budget? How's that work, or should I wait until we talk about COVID?
Um, it's not a part of the proposed budget because that was, um, a supplemental appropriation due to COVID. Um, so, no, and, uh, well, this is, I guess, according to the charter, um, it's a purpose specific. So whatever the unspent funds are, um, it would be, you know, in, uh, whatever the charter basically says, it's either will be brought back to the unassigned, or it will be appropriated by the town of council, by the town council.
Okay. Yeah.
But no, it's not something we budget for. This was a supplemental appropriation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chris?
Pete, I don't know if you were going to jump into capital next, or, okay, all right, I'll.
Okay.
My question was going to be about that, but you'll probably cover it anyways. I just, nevermind.
So capital's page 272. And you'll see that's the, uh, 273, which is the turf field contribution, which we do every year for 50,000. Chris, did you have a question on that? Okay. Does anybody have any question on, on? Does anybody have any question on, on the mayor's office capital? Dave?
Dave, you're muted.
Not used to that. Um, since we were talking about the turf field, Olga, if you're still there, how much is in the turf field account is, uh, do we know just yet?
Well, so far, mayor has been putting it, putting in fifty thousand every year, so there will be one hundred fifty thousand from the, um, of towns' contributions. And then board of ed, um, they've assigned, uh, probably around a hundred thousand so far. Uh, we don't really mind that we do have access to the, uh, information, but it's, you know, comes from their side, but I believe it's, um, it's somewhere in the range of a hundred thousand, probably a little less than that, and the town has so far appropriated a hundred fifty thousand.
And this, David put us at two hundred, if we, this goes and it gets approved by the voter.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Chris?
And just for clarity's sake, we, um, have contributed everything that we agreed to, to contribute for the turf fields on the town side, correct?
Yes.
Do we know if the school is up to date?
Um, we, we could ask them that when they come and present to us.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Any other questions for mayor capital? Okay. Uh, next town council budget, which is page fifty-nine in your budget books. And you can see, uh, the only increase was for, uh, consultants, and that is, uh, where we have our secretarial pool for, uh, all the commissions that take minutes and whatnot. So that was an increase as we've had some increased, uh, uh, commissions that we've added in the prior years. Uh, Dave?
Yeah, I was looking for salaries for the council members.
Hold on, let me get my magnifier glass here, hold on. Oh, there it is. It's under material and supplies, Dave, it's tiny.
Oh, is that where it is? Okay, thank you.
Right above toner and paper.
Katie?
Yes, Walter.
You mean that Dave didn't get a hundred percent raise of zero?
Yeah, we didn't tell him about the rest of us.
Okay.
Any question, any questions on the council?
Walter, he couldn't figure out zero times a hundred.
I did what, Stephanie?
He couldn't figure out zero times a hundred.
Okay.
And the, uh, the next is, uh, board of finance budget, uh, which is page seventy-one. Walter, did you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, it's, it's really, uh, straightforward. Um, basically, it's the secretarial help and the supplies we need for that. It's really dependent on the number of, uh, extra meetings we may have to during the year, but in my tenure on, on that board for ten years, I don't think we've gone over the, the proposed budget at all in any one of the areas, so.
Any questions for Walter on the board of finance budget? Okay. Um, what I'd like to ask is, I know it's not mentioned here, but at the pleasure of the council and board of finance, um, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment?
Uh, please use the raise hand feature.
Yep, I'm sorry, Mike, please use the raise hand feature? Do you see anybody, Mike? I do not.
Nope.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion on the town council size to recess to Wednesday, February twenty-four, okay?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion for the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Walter?
Make a motion for recess of the board of finance until tomorrow evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trevor seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we are.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody, and, uh, we'll see you guys tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, guys. Thank you. Bye-bye.